Order the Bucksport Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, September third, twenty twenty four. Roll call.
George Hansen. Terry Doty is absent. Jay D. Ross.
Here.
Mark Misslussen.
Here.
Crystal Harland.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Michael Hader.
Here.
Item two, review and acceptance of the meeting, of the minutes of the meeting of August sixth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made to approve the minutes, seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Chairs report, there is none. Code enforcement officers report.
I haven't got anything.
Does that mean no?
No.
Okay.
We'll grill them later.
Okay. Unfinished business, we have none listed. Item six, new business. A subdivision amendment, Wardwell Commercial Development. Applicant, Robert Wardwell and Sons Incorporated, location off Heritage Park Road.
I believe Mr. Gordon is here to represent them tonight. You can stand right up here. I think you'll explain it better than I will. Actually called the company the other day, told them the site was really slow for some reason. They say it's just been, I've tried different browsers, other people have told me that. Yes. Yep. You can't see the panels, but you can see all the cutting, yep. I guess I could have given you an update on that. Is that good? Do you want closer?
That's funny, yeah. The original subdivision was done in like ninety nine. There have been several divisions since then. But on this lot six, and I was involved in two of them. The first one was this one right in here in two thousand fifteen. That's the first one I worked on. That's when Robert Wardwell and Sons Incorporated conveyed the building and piece of land to, initially to Jeff Gamelin, and it's now held in a entity called, I think, Cub, Cub Acres LLC. And then I did the next one down here, which is where the old garage used to be. When again, Robert Wardwell and Sons sold the old garage to Bobby and Robin Wardwell. And that again was a subdivision amendment that was approved by the board. And I was, about two years ago, in twenty two, I was, um, Mr. Gamelin wanted to buy some more land around it, from them. And as, when I got to looking at it, um, after John Johnny had had his stroke, at some point, the family conveyed a piece to, in here, to him. So he had a piece like that, but as I explained to him, they never got subdivision approval for this piece in here. And he wanted to buy some more. So here, we're here tonight to take care of both those issues. To get after the fact approval for the piece that they, that he now owns. And then he wants to buy more land around it, which is up here, up like down in here.
So could you introduce yourself and state what the relationship is to the Wardwell Construct Commercial Development?
I'm Alan Gordon. I'm a land surveyor. I was hired by them to do the boundary, survey work and to put the plans together and do the presentation.
So you were hired to do that work and then represent the request for a subdivision amendment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And this is the, in the Heritage Park, off of Route forty six?
Yes.
And the, the thing we're looking at on the left, that's the preparation for the solar farm that was approved?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so, yes. So I can answer any questions you have about it. It's, uh,
Do I have any questions from Mr. Gordon?
I guess I do. I wanna make sure I have clarity. The piece you said they bought, but isn't marked, is that?
It's marked. It's this, it's an L-shaped piece right here, this area right here.
Okay. That's what, that's what I was looking at. And then you wanna go to the top of that and just add on that whole section up in here.
Plus some out on the side.
Right, exactly. This whole piece right in there. Okay, so it encompasses the whole thing. Yeah.
I have a quick question on lot six C.
Yep.
Is this like a buffer? Is this?
They wanted to retain it in case anybody ever wanted access to land out in the back. They don't own the back land anymore, or I don't know if they ever did.
But it's not part of six B, it's a separate lot.
It would be a separate lot, yes. Just an access.
Any other questions? Oop, is there anything else we need to know about this, or?
I thought it was pretty straightforward. I'm not sure how that transferred, because they're getting taxed on that land, so I mean, the assessor knew that they bought it, but somehow it escaped getting subdivision approval. I don't even, do you know when that happened?
In twenty one maybe. I, I can tell you.
Maybe during COVID. Maybe that's why, I don't know. The first I heard of it was when Mr. Gordon came to my office. But I don't have any concerns, but I don't know if anybody here, the public is here for that. Is there a intended use?
Well, it's all covered with granite rock right now. It's all part of freshwater stones, granite business. Hey, George.
Hey, hey, look.
Yeah, here's the one. This is dated in two thousand twenty one. Oh, it's been recorded, but it hasn't been approved by the planning board. Any division of that law requires planning board approval.
Do we need to handle this as two separate issues, or?
No.
By approving the, by approving and signing and recording, it takes care of everything.
And all those two new pieces, this will all become lot six A, right? No new lots or anything like that. We're just adding to six A.
Anyone else on the board, any more questions?
Are they taking part of, it looks like now a formerly Kempton Holdings LLC, is that line that comes down and meets here, is that part of their lot, or not their lot?
They're not taking any of the, that's.
Wasn't an old line?
The Kempton Equities, Kempton Holdings, that's the motorcycle training place.
The dotted line, that was an old property line?
That is. That's the old lines of lot six on the original subdivision plan. You see, there, there were divisions made of lot six before I was ever involved. And a piece of it was conveyed with other land that the Wardwells owned to make the motorcycle training school that's there. And for some reason, a piece of it was also conveyed to land the Wardwells retained.
Is that being amended to, or is that already all set?
That's done a long time ago. Yeah, that was, um, actually, it was done twice, and I don't know why. The plans are recorded in file thirty seven, one, page one thirty nine, and pa- and file thirty nine, page one eighty two. Those are plans that depict the motorcycle property when that went through planning board approval, and those are recorded. That was done in like two thousand eight and two thousand ten. And I've compared the two plans, and I don't see what the difference is, but there must have been something that had to be fixed at the time.
Anything else? Is there anyone in the audience who has, cares to make any comment about this? Seeing none, I guess we'll move on. Uh, I guess we reached the point as a board where we can consider a motion on this. Anyone care to make any, any type of a motion?
I guess I'll make the motion to approve the subdivision amendment for Wardwell Commercial Development.
Okay, amendments been made. Approve the amendment. Anyone want to second?
Second.
Okay. We moved and seconded that the amendment be approved. Do we need to do any more discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Amendment is carried. Thank you.
So I just need one plan with all the original signatures to get recorded.
You can do this one?
It has to be unfolded and, and cleaned to get it recorded, so.
And cleaned.
The registry won't take it if it's pulled over.
Okay, moving on. Item B, site plan review. Bucksboard Inn cabin expansion, applicant, Bill Nichols. Location seventy U S Route one. Mr. Nichols?
I'm Todd Nichols, Bill Nichols' son. I'm half owner of the motel. So what we'd like to do is put seventeen cabins, potentially seventeen cabins, on the backside of the motel. There's five acres that comes along with the motel. Seasonal rentals.
Do you have a, a, a site plan yet?
It's not an architectural site plan, but I think it's.
Gee, that didn't come to us on the email, did it?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Okay.
It's not a, it's just a.
Is that where the path comes out? I was looking for that.
The Miles Lane.
Comes out there, the one you guys just did, the walking path? They just, I saw it online, they did a walking path. So it goes up and around and comes back down?
Yep.
Okay. I thought, for some reason, I thought it read online that it went to the Miles Lane Trail, so I was trying to find if it had been on the trail.
Well, there's the Miles Lane, not the official, yep, yep. Which I thought where all the kids come down through was the Miles Lane's trail, but actually that goes up and cuts over onto a neighbor's property.
See, I thought there was, there was a little path that kids used to use when.
Yeah, they still use it.
Way back in the day, behind like windmill down well. There's like a gate there now. I thought that's where it went up to, but I guess.
Where's, where's the path on, in relation to the motel on that?
The Miles or ours?
Yours.
The tree line's different now, this.
Yeah, this is, hold on, I can, but it's really green, so bear with me. They took the picture when it was in full bloom, so.
There we go.
Not sure that helps you, but.
So actually, the trail comes up through in this area, and then goes up on top of the hill, and then comes back. But hooks on to the Miles right away.
Oh, I was gonna say, does, where does it connect to?
Miles Lane is Paper Street. It's never gonna be built, at least, that's what the council says. It's certainly never gonna go down to Route one, because it's already so congested right there, they're not gonna have another opening coming out onto Route one there.
It connects to Route one, it's just not utilized.
The Paper Street does, but we're never gonna build a.
Didn't give the land to the owners. I thought they were gonna do that. They didn't do that?
They didn't. Um, we talked about giving the small strip between eighty U S Route one and Dunkin' Donuts, uh, to them, because Dunkin' Donuts was looking at buying eighty U S Route one, that, this was years ago, to increase their parking and make the, uh, drive-through lane much larger. Ended up not happening, so we never did anything with the land transfer, and so, um, but as far as the rest of the Paper Street goes, the thought has been that, based on, so up in here, you can see where the hand is.
Can you see where you're pointing?
Oh, you can see my cursor there. I'll show you. So, um. So up here is a property line that comes down, and all the, and so this house here owns a big chunk of land, and then Donna Hoffman, who just passed away, owned a big chunk of land here. And the Paper Street comes down through, um, and the town of Bucksport owns an entrance, I believe it's right here, to Nicholson that comes over and connects to that Paper Street. So the town has thought, you don't know what's gonna happen development-wise with these two big lots, or with your land. So best to keep that in case we ever wanna have a road in there.
That'd be nice.
But it wouldn't go all the way down to U S Route one, but it might connect up to Pond Street or something. You don't know what the future holds, so there's no reason to get rid of it right now, just kinda sit on it and see what happens. I don't know if that makes sense to you. If, if I could get the other thing to work, I could show you the actual lot lines, but for some reason, it's just being a stinker.
Kinda on that piece of, it runs up parallel to Nicholson Avenue, it's like a, used to be, what's gonna be the Miles Lane extension?
There you go. So you can see the two acre and the two point two four acre. Those are the two lots I was talking about.
Yep.
And then Miles Lane goes up the side here, this is the Paper Street, um, and then the spot where the town owns is this one point two three acre. The town could connect there to the Paper Street, and then right now, Mr. McLeod, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Wall, owns this lot here. And that also has an entrance out over to Nicholson Avenue, if somebody wanted to buy that land and do something with that. And that lot does have entrance down onto U S Route one, because there used to be a house there that was torn down. No, it, it was Larry's. Well, like, he bought it from somebody and he tore the house down, because it wasn't any good.
Have all the neighbors been notified?
Yes, I think some of them are here tonight. I don't know which ones are which, but they're here.
So these would be seasonal. It's just a, uh, twelve by twenty-four cabin, and they have a three-quarter bath.
How would they heat it?
With a, they'll have heat pumps. Each one will have a heat pump. And then Renai heaters.
So your long range plan is to have as many as seventeen of these cabins?
I don't know if we'll actually end up hitting that seventeen. The, what we'd like to have is the three on this side, and then, um, up through twelve.
Are those roads to scale for the fire department?
They'll be twelve feet wide.
Twelve? Is that adequate enough? I'm not sure if twelve is adequate.
It's fine. I mean, it's one lane, but yeah. They're just, they're just dirt paths, like.
Yeah, it'll be gravel.
Yeah.
It's not a road necessarily, it's a.
Oh, so it's.
Right.
So how, how are people gonna get their luggage there and that kind of?
Nope, each cabin will have a parking spot.
Parking spot to park in?
Yes.
Okay, but that's what I'm having trouble understanding. So the path coming down to the hotel, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not really true. I, I drive up there with my truck.
Yeah, I understand, but where's the walking path?
Oh, that's a different thing.
Yeah, that's just, uh, something we did for guests to walk on. It's just a walking trail.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out how guests get back there, and emergency vehicles get in there. I'm, I'm just trying to think about how that's going to function.
Yes.
Gotcha. Actually, that emergency vehicles thing is a good point. Yeah, so right now, the road comes around the hotel, and you can go this way as well, around the front, and go up that road, and tie into the tube.
Correct.
But as far as where the twelve feet's wide now?
I'm just looking at the layout. The layout doesn't really say to me that, you know.
It's more like a.
It's a dream, I understand.
Campground, uh, not, not campground, but.
I'm, I'm with you. I'm with you, I understand where you're going, but.
Those top two cabins, like, was a setback sufficient? I mean, I, I know this is not the, it's not efficient.
The setback is ten feet in the downtown, in this zone, so yes.
It'll be ten feet on the right, ten feet on number twelve. Uh, if we ever got to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen on the hinks side, that's gonna be more like twenty, twenty-five foot setback.
So we haven't seen any, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go. You sure?
Yeah.
So we haven't seen, has it gone to the fire department, public safety, for any feedback on this?
No. Nope, I haven't done that. It's gone to the sewer department, and they approved this, these yellow lines on the.
That's what I was gonna ask, the yellow lines that represent.
Are sewer lines.
Yes.
Okay. And that's all been approved by Dave Mishu and reviewed through that.
Um, and you're going to leave this mostly wooded, is that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Could make the road wider if you needed to.
Oh, yes, we could definitely make the road wider. I, I thought twelve feet would be sufficient, but.
Well, he makes a good point that you're gonna need to get a fire truck up in there, and they need to be able to turn around.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Well, it's, just one looks, has a pretty big cul-de-sac, but I, I mean, and then the other one has a loop, so.
Yeah, they could probably turn around and those, I don't know their exact dimensions.
No, you wouldn't get a full fire truck.
Although, like, if you have to go, if you had to go to the cul-de-sac one, that's kind of a hard left.
Yes.
From that, you know what I mean? It's, but I don't know, like, again, it's, I'm not exactly sure if this is, I mean, twelve feet.
No, are these built on, it's pretty, you know, straight up. I don't know how it is over there exactly what long it is, but is it gonna, are they gonna be, you know, flattened, or is it gonna still be set on material?
No, they're gonna be set on helical piers.
On what?
Helical piers. It's like a, uh, big, yep.
Instead of a sonotube filled with concrete, you screw it in the ground. Yeah. It's used in place of drive, driving miles.
You can see some, uh, the Spofford Lodge, used them for their deck, right there on your road, so you can.
Guess they walk past it.
Yeah, there's, there's like three or four of them in there. It does take them like fifteen, twenty minutes to put them in, if they know where they're going.
They're not cheap, though.
No.
So you were asking who does it, and it's actually, uh, Archideck of Central Maine in Brewer that does that.
Yep. And there's, I just bumped into a guy having somebody in out on Jacob Up Fore, and I don't know if he's, but I wanna.
So they can use.
Cabin's gonna be, sorry, I'm gonna drop.
Twelve by twenty-four.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna have like a separate bedroom, two separate bedrooms?
No, it's gonna be open floor, except for the three-quarter bath. It's pretty much a hotel room.
Okay, no fire pits?
Nope. Uh, outside, exterior. There'll be a fire pit, picnic table, barbecue.
Um, so they won't be accessible, uh, or visible from Main Street or, um, Route one, I mean?
Nah, you.
Or will they be?
You, you'll probably be able to see up through, because like right now, if you're going through Dunkin' Donuts, you can see the road that goes up into the woods right there. You'd have to look to see them, but you'll be able to see them.
You'll change the signage to over in the budget here.
Yes.
Something larger than.
There is a floor plan. Can we add it here somewhere? Uh, Mark.
What?
Ask the floor plan.
Yeah, the bathroom layout's not correct, but.
So that front part there is a deck, and then you got the room and the kitchen, hat and a bathroom. Yeah, you're basically a hotel room.
Yes.
With a deck.
Which a lot of times throughout the summer, we're booked, and we have to turn people away, and we've run the idea across to guests, and all of them like the idea.
Probably a more, um, financially feasible plan than buying a second property, let's say, close to the edge of town that's currently for sale, so.
Oh. I, uh, we looked at that before we purchased the Bucksboard Inn.
Let's just leave it at that.
So these will have fire pits?
Exterior fire pit, yeah.
What's the slope of the land like as you, uh, go up from the existing?
It has a pretty good grade going up.
Have you considered, uh, instead of ending at a cul- like each branch ending at a cul-de-sac, make it a loop road?
You can. I would be able to make a loop road if we could purchase the left-hand side.
Yeah.
Um, it's under a trust, and I have spoken with the owner of that property, but she's unable.
Two point two four? Or the Donna Hoffman?
Not the Donna Hoffman one, the other.
The two point two four.
Yes. Then you could actually go right up, out to the other street.
Oh, up to Pond Street.
You could go through Pond Street.
I mean, um, the, where cabin fourteen and ten and eleven are, just connect those two what look like cul-de-sacs. Or is the slope kinda steep there?
It's, there's flat spots, and then there's grade, so he's kinda got the cabins on the flat parts.
Yeah, so, uh, eight through twelve is up on the top. And we wouldn't actually be able to connect that cul-de-sac to the other one without being able to purchase that other piece of land.
Oh, okay.
If we could purchase that other piece of land, then it would be really easy to connect the two.
Because of the grades, you're saying?
Correct.
So you'd have to go up before you could go down?
Yes.
I think I see a, a little bit of a problem with having the fire pits out there, um, only from the point of view of downtown, and all the homes around it. I'm not sure how that would play out with folks there, with the smoke and everything, just thoughts I'm having as I'm looking at the plan. I think it's a nice plan.
Mm-hmm.
What you're trying to do. I'm just trying to think of all the neighbors around it.
There, I mean, there are smokeless fire pits, like that solo stone.
Yeah, we do have a smokeless one currently in, uh.
There you go. That answers that question, if you can do that.
I mean, if, you know, if that might mitigate, you know, fifteen, seventeen fires in that neighborhood.
And a lot of people don't necessarily have fires either, you know.
I mean, they are allowed in the downtown, as long as they're in a fire pit ring or something.
Yeah, yeah, and you have to have ten-foot diameter crush rock.
But you're right, these could be city folks that don't know anything about fire, and, yeah, you know, you're right, that's.
I'm just, just, I don't know if I'm right. Tell me what. Um, but it's, they're running Airbnb, and, um, insurance was, costs a lot more when you live and have, like, we prohibited fires, um, on the property, any open flame, just because of, of the insurance cost, but, um, and that was, again, this way up on this Williams Ponds, that wasn't really close to fire, you know, it was, it was just safer and cheaper for us to not allow that, but, um, the, um, I don't know, I, if you think it'll work, then it'll be more safe.
I mean, we could always put in propane.
Mm-hmm.
Fire pits.
Right.
That, that's what we did. We, we, we go just, we said, hey, you wanna go outside, toast, make some smores?
Yep, which we have natural gas on the land, so we could do natural gas as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's, that was easier than if I had that, than having to like mess around with tanks. Um, if somebody grills out everything, then you better like replace the tank in the middle of the week or something like that.
Yep.
Anyway, um, it'll be on town water.
Yes.
Yeah, the town water, town sewer.
I know we don't do this very often, but if you guys have any interest in a site visit to check this place out.
But I was thinking, site visit might be cool.
Not right now, it has to be planned.
Hey, we can head right up.
There's more worse.
Yeah, yeah, site visit is considered the same as a meeting, so we have to advertise it and put it out there that, so the public can attend if they'd like, and we have to take minutes and everything, but, um, if that's something you're interested in doing.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
All the
Wouldn't take very long.
Roads that you see on there have been created. We've hauled out forty trailer loads of down trees, and we've pretty much cleaned that property right out.
Were you planning for lighting there, or, I mean, like, street lighting, or path lighting, or no, like, none of that?
Yeah, we'll probably put some lights down through. I'm assuming we'll probably have.
You guys threw a little ledge over there, there was a lot of leftover, yeah, I was gonna say, so you're gonna do any blasting, or are you guys just gonna?
Supposedly, they can attach the helical piers to the ledge.
Okay. So I know when the Duncan was looking at, that lo- that was one of the reasons.
Well, they're probably gonna put a foundation, I'm assuming.
Well, they were just gonna do a road, but the ledge that was there is why I was asking, is there was a lot of ledge there, so I assume you guys had it as well.
Yep.
Yeah, it's all through there.
Yeah.
On average, how much room is there between cabins? Many feet between cabins on average, I mean, you must have given some thought as to how many you could put in, so.
Yes.
Cause I see some look closer on one side, some further away.
Four, five and six is probably about twenty feet between. Same as one, two and three. Uh the upper ones, eight through twelve, have considerably more space to them.
Are you gonna allow, like if a family shows up and the kids are gonna stay in a tent or something like that?
No, no tenting. That, that had been thrown, proposed and usually tenters, you run into so much noise and riffraff and we don't put up with any, we have ten o'clock's quiet time and if anyone's rowdy. Then my daughter manages a place and she quiets them down. Yeah.
You're, you're going to have like a dumpster for, for trash under people's stairs?
Yes, we have a dumpster.
Yeah, so that's people take your, you know, like, like a regular campground.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
But would they or would your, you guys are gonna clean them just like regular rooms?
Oh yes, we have cleaning people that will go up through and clean.
Yeah, but not daily though, right? If, if they're cabins, I would not, I would.
They're, they'll be on nightly rentals.
Oh, okay, so if I wanted it for a week.
If so. Yeah, if you wanna do it for a week, then you could rent for a week, but they're based on nightly rentals.
I think a cabin's yours for the week and then you clean it and you, you know, do beds and you take the trash, I mean, but this, so it's actually more hotelish than.
Correct. Problem with Bucksport is we get the people that stop in between and they don't stay. So a lot of times we have, you know, one, two night rentals. Sometimes we do, we do have a few people that show up and they stay, actually stay for three weeks.
Wow.
But for the majority of it, um it's short-term.
Yeah, but if these are, you know, if these are nice enough to where it gets out, maybe it becomes a destination place. I mean, if it's a great centralized location spot, it's. I mean, that's what I found out when I ran Airbnb, people would use that, just go to K a few days.
Yes.
Drive down Deer Isle and go to Camden, drive up to Katon, whatever, you know what I mean, it was, it was generally less expensive to stay in Bar Harbor or in Camden and still afforded you easy day trips to all of these different areas.
Yeah, which we have a good majority that do that as well. I mean, the biggest majority is short-term, but we do have people that stay because they say down in Bar Harbor, you're looking at three to six hundred dollars a night for rental.
Yeah, I underst- obviously it's part of the motel, but are you going to put these cabins on Airbnb sites?
No.
No. So if they want it, they have to go through the hotel and book them.
Correct.
And the reason for the pump tank?
Uh because you can't get the proper pitch, that's, would be a septic pump tank.
Gathering that, so the other side doesn't need it at all, it's just the ones up the top.
Correct.
Interesting.
So the twelve through seventeen is pretty much the same height, if not a little bit lower than one. One is where you start going up, but twelve through seventeen is off to the side and it's kind of a lower lying area.
So you cleared it all out, do you have crushed rock on it now for the road or anything?
No, we started graveling the entrance going up, but we would, don't want to put any finish because we still have to run the electric lines and the waters.
What are you planning on finishing it with? Is it just gonna be gravel?
Yes. We're gonna keep it as natural as possible.
Kind of feels like you're in the woods even though you're right in town.
Yes.
It, it does feel like you're out by my house, it's weird.
I mean, if you're willing to do a site visit, I think that would say a lot.
I would.
Yeah, I'm not going up on the winter time. Bring your sled.
So you said these were stick built, you say you're not gonna go get like Hillview mini barns?
That's what I was looking at first, but no, we're doing stick build. It's local, local builder.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
That way they can be built to code and.
Yep.
Um today's the third, like, I don't know what you guys like during the day. I know some of you retired, but some of you aren't, so um would, does it need to be evening or day or?
Um, depends on what's going on.
Let's see, um maybe mid-afternoon, like with three-ish, something like that, two, three.
Anything like, anything works for me, it's, okay.
Is that a good time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Mark's idea, the afternoon.
Okay, wanna do the seventeenth, two weeks from today?
Sounds good.
That gives me time to advertise it.
Think it's gonna rain on that day.
I'll bring a number over.
What time?
Three o'clock.
Uh, are we gonna do Wednesday, the eighteenth at three?
So close. I don't care.
Okay.
Is that what you want?
Well, I have something at three thirty on Tuesday, so I couldn't be there, but.
The eighteenth work for everybody?
I'm, I'm working with the fire department, but maybe I can bring Captain Connor with me.
Don't go to the nineteenth.
That would be, which day is it going to be?
Or Monday the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Or Monday the sixteenth, I just can't do the Tuesday.
Okay, in the afternoon, sure. With Monday the sixteenth.
Monday the sixteenth?
Nine sixteen at three?
Okay. Nine sixteen at three. And I, like I said, I don't think it'll take very long.
Right.
Yes. I can't imagine us being there more than an hour and that, that would be a lot of gavin.
Oh.
And you guys can do that, I know.
Depends on who comes, right, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, so we wanna table this until after that and?
I think it would be proper to, to table it, at least until then.
Do you even have, at least hear if the public has any concerns or anything that we could address that, yeah?
Yeah, I think we should do that.
And I, I don't think I would like to see in the meantime is someone from public safety.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
I think, I think Richard brought up a really good point.
Okay. Yep, I mean, uh.
Mr. Nichols, do you have anything else for us right now?
I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any property abouters that are here that would care to speak? Step on up and introduce yourself, please. Okay, come on, Mr. Nichols, you, you can have a seat, thank you.
Okay.
Hate to make you come up, but the.
I know.
People on TV can't hear you if you're not.
Oh, that's stupid. I'm like Toby Mason and I have property on Hink Street.
Okay.
How close is that gonna be to the back of Hink Street? There's a, there's a spring out there somewhere, there's a ravine out there, there are many oak trees out there.
Do you wanna comment on that, Todd, as how far over to that property line you're going?
It's, it's a. Minus oh two nine oh four.
It's gonna be in a twenty-five foot area and for the oak trees, I mean, the, the trees are, are trees, but we're not going to be taking any of them then.
Yeah, the only thing he's cut out of there really is dead stuff for the, it was a mess in there.
Yeah, it is.
I know, it still is.
Yeah.
We're leaving the, we're leaving those big oaks out of there.
It still is. Okay. Um, I guess that's all I got.
Do you have any other questions or concerns? It's okay.
Done with the moment.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Toby.
Yep.
Anyone else would uh care to speak? Join once, go in twice. Okay, I guess we'll end that portion of it. Uh anything more you wanna add to this loop or?
No, I think the site visit's a good idea. I think you guys can get a feel for the land and see what it's like and try and get the fire department there as well and they can tell us what their concerns are and.
Mm-hmm.
Go from there.
Good, good. I, I would like to see that site plan as, as site visit as soon as possible too, but I'm sure Mr. Nichols is in the starting box and already it goes and.
Yeah, we'd like to do, at least get ready up this year because we're gonna finish the insides ourselves.
Yep.
So that would give us a winter project.
I mean, I, I would be very uncomfortable trying to make any kind of decisions, especially if I think it, the best that it could be tabled, we'll do the site visit and uh.
Yeah.
Public safety, uh uh will you be speaking with public safety?
Yeah, I'm gonna send him an invite now.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Copy me on that.
Good, so maybe in a couple of weeks we could cover all the bases and.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything they wish to bring up at this time? Seeing nothing, then we will move on. And that will be tabled until at least the next meeting. Seven, administrative business, none. Number eight, limited public forum and opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to it, land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Hearing nothing and seeing nothing, I will close that portion of our meeting. Item nine is discussion. Is there anything we as the board need to discuss?
I should've told you during my update, but now's a good time. Um I'd forgotten about it until we saw it on the satellite there, but I did go out last week to the solar farm for the Wassons there. Um kinda interesting, um I would say. Two-thirds of the panels are installed, um the rest of the racks are already in place, but the panels aren't on them. Um. They still have ways to go, cause those have to all be wired and everything, so just because the panels are up doesn't mean that it's finished, you know, um and they haven't done fencing yet. That'll, they're gonna do after they get everything in place, um which was kinda interesting, uh usually that's done first, but they're doing it different, um. When they cut all those trees and a lot of it was hardwood, they couldn't find anybody to take it.
Really?
And I'm like, why didn't you call me?
Yeah.
And they're like, oh, we, we checked with every place in the state and I'm like.
Oh, jeez.
I know four or five guys that would've taken that wood, it's, all they had to do was truck it, he says, yeah, we were trying to get rid of it, we, it was free.
Yeah. So what did they do?
They chipped it all, whatever.
Oh, jeez.
Can you believe that?
That's too bad.
I felt s- I'm like, oh.
Yeah, look at all that fire.
Oh, there's so many, there's like four or five guys that cut fire, were right here in town, that would've taken that.
Ah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
That's too bad.
But if anybody is interested, they've got piles of mulch up there that they still haven't, have to get rid of some of that. They've gotten rid of a bunch of it, but. Even that, they've had a hard time getting rid of and I told them, I just.
Do I think you mulch? We know a guy. We know a guy.
Yeah, and it's pretty close. Um so I, I told them, you know, there's um. Jackson Labs and Main Maritime Academy and a couple of other places have those biofuel boilers that they put in like ten, twelve years ago. And I assume they're still operating and that's the kinda stuff they burn, so. I don't know, if you'll, if you'll get them to come get any of it or what he's gonna do?
Well, the same kinda wood chip school uses.
Mm, it's, it's like a. It's stringy, it's, it's not like chips like fancy like you'd see at Lowe's, it's.
But is it what the school uses on the playground?
No, you wouldn't use it for that.
They put it past through cold blood, that's what I use, which.
Yeah, something like that, you probably could.
Yeah. You know, it was a way to keep the weed stander growth down.
Yeah.
Leaves right up his house from the back of my.
Yeah.
Maybe.
You guys want some?
If you want some, drive up in there and ask for the foreman and I'm sure that they will hook you up. Cause there was a pile the size of this room when I was up there last week.
Now, how long are those good for? How long is that gonna stay and what happens when it has to come down?
The solar farm?
Yeah.
Uh. They say minimum twenty years, then they got, I think, two, five-year extensions that they're allowed and then after that, they either have to completely dismantle and just remove everything. Or they have the option to, if there's a, like a way to upgrade or whatever and it's, and it's working and stuff, then they may do that, but.
So you're looking at thirty years? And who knows if the technology's gonna be in thirty years right there?
Right, right.
Correct.
And are they selling it back to our grid? Is it on our grid? I saw the big p- the look like.
I'm sure, I'm sure it is the same as these other ones, you know.
They're using it. But you pay more for it.
Don't get any of us going. I've just given you an update on the status of it, cause I hadn't been up in there and he invited me up to see some puddings he was pouring and. He's, they were getting ready to pour everything for the transformers and the converters and all that stuff, so. Anyway, that was all I had.
Have you got anything else to discuss?
Well, I'll just, I'll just ask the question.
Nothing's changed.
Okay, thank you for the answer.
How did you know he was gonna ask it?
He has the same ones.
I can tell you this, as of today, the permits we issued five years ago expired.
So, I mean, for the public, I guess, we'll have to say Whole Oceans now has no permits to build anything in Bucksport.
Yes. And it's. Well, they didn't have building permits anyways, they only had land use approval from you folks. They still had to have plan review and permits for the.
I thought they had gone through that process. What was the state of Maine then for the uh change in their ventilation?
That was, in their design phase, they were trying to figure things out, but I never got official plans to do permitting and as far as I know, fire marshal didn't either, so.
Well, interesting.
They never got that far.
Wow, five years?
Yeah.
It's disappointing.
Do they wanna sell it?
I have no idea. As long as they keep paying the taxes.
We need to find out, we need to get, get stuff going.
We don't have any say, they own it.
Well, I know, we need them though to sell it or do something with it. Can we reach out to them and say, hey, would you like to sell it or?
They've been reaching out, but.
Yeah, but that was to do something with it. Now we're saying, you, you wanna take some, somebody takes, give them some money.
I talked to somebody as recent as six to eight weeks ago and they said that they're still saying they're gonna do it. I don't know what to tell them.
It's, there's no incentive for them to sell that property, do something with it.
Well, it's just they like.
Just, I mean, it, right, it's, it's like AIM, the only incentive they have is to create outside garbage in the town. I mean, really, they've, they've extracted the most of that whole recycling.
Yeah, but. I mean, I think there, there are other companies out there that would love to have that property. It's got deep water, it's got.
Right, this is.
Elfo and.
That's what we're talking about.
And in, intake and stuff and those things are, that's hard infrastructure to get approved and we've already got it, so, but we don't own it, they do, so I don't have any control over what they do with it.
Unless there was some incentive to like make them have to do something with the property, but I don't, I mean.
I did bring up your abandoned building thing to the council and they're gonna try and get that on the infrastructure committee.
Good.
About a month from now to discuss it, so.
Good, walk past these properties.
I know.
That church on Franklin Street, it's just, it's, it's gonna, it's an ice water.
I know.
Yeah, right, it's, it devalues the whole like neighborhood when you have something like that.
My, my concern is, in thinking about this more, is that they will just stop paying the taxes and let the town take it rather than. Rather than paying to have it demolished. It's gonna cost.
Are we trying to have a church now?
Yeah, yeah, we talk, the old Methodist church, yes.
The church. It would probably cost more to demolish it than it would to.
Yeah. Well, the gentleman precarious holds it still, correct?
He does, yeah. So, I mean, I, that's just one property, but I mean, it's, it's a.
It's. Some of, I, I think some of the properties could have been, we have, had, they had.
Some could, yeah.
Yes, uh had they not been allowed to self-immolate, uh.
That's on the banks and those banks, they, you can't get ahold of them, they're these giant national conglomerates.
And it's an incentive to do something with this, I mean, or disincentive to, to keep this, I re- I realize it's, you know, maybe some, somebody's big real estate portfolio, it's just a minor thing. But uh if they, you know, if there's a penalty.
When the night comes that there's just, they just sit and sit and sit and sit.
That's a shame, it's just a shame.
Yeah, who, there's. There's a house up on River Road that was like that, right, and now it's.
Right, cause that blue one on Central Street's been sitting there for ten years, just rotting.
That one on the corner of uh going out Central Street that they tore down now, but that was on, that was.
That was salvageable at one point.
That seemed like it was salvageable and it ended up sitting there for.
Right. Right, so there's, there's.
The Marona, that's.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, right, 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 by the bridge.
Okay, I've tried to get ahold of somebody on that one and you can't, that little ranch that's across the street, um.
I guess, yeah. It's as far as you can cross over the Brona.
Yeah, yeah.
At, at, at some point in the, in the past, they had oil leak on that land or something, I don't know, so.
That's what I'm told, yeah.
I don't remember the whole story, but I don't know, the oil tank just leaked and I don't know, it was, I didn't have it before, I don't know what the story is, but something I'd like to have happen at that place.
Yeah.
So nobody lived there, they just held on to it, so. It's a, the abandoned properties don't do well for the neighbors, neighborhood is doing it. And um so that's, that's why.
Yeah.
We could be silent while we're talking.
I don't have anything else. Unless you have more questions.
Anybody? Anything else to discuss? Move on to item ten, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hi, second.
Let's have a discussion.
Do we need to have any discussion on that? All those in favor of adjournment?
No.
Meeting adjourned.